With that 10-year plan any further, but just delay the assessment portion a bit. So we've got the assessment piece delayed by a year, but continuing to amortize the debt over a 10-year period. And then moving on to that following page. The first part here is speaking to the special assessment revenues that are going to be pledged. So we are anticipating that the city is going to assess around $796,115 to the benefiting property owners. Those assessments will be levied at a rate of one and a half over the average interest rate on the bonds, which we are assuming in total to equal about 2.9%. It speaks to the utility revenue pledge to offset the debt service on the bonds. And that brings us to the overall property tax levy. Based on what we're assuming within the finance plan, we are assuming that an annual tax levy would be just shy of around $180,000 per year. We do have a statement in the plan related to COVID-19, and that really just states that we've seen more volatility in the market than we've seen in previous years. And because of that, while we are estimating those rates based on the assumed credit rating that we would anticipate the city to receive, we have cushioned those rates a bit, which is what I mentioned at the very beginning. So then, you know, you're scrolling through, Julie, sorry about that. So then I'll just direct your attention to the very last page of the finance plan, and that just is the schedule. So we've got the city council considering the set sale resolution this evening. And from there, we would work with SMP to get that rating back for the city. We're hoping to receive the rating back on August 26th so that we can get some documents over to the city, hold that sale September 8th, that morning at 11:00 a.m., and then bring those proposals back before the city council that evening at your regularly scheduled meeting. And that would allow for bond proceeds to be delivered to the city on October 1st. So as those contractor payments start rolling in, you'll have cash on hand to pay the contractor. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or dive in specifically to any areas of the finance plan that you may have questions on. Otherwise, you do have a resolution before you calling for the sale of $3,655,000 in general obligation bonds.
Thank you, Jessica. Council, any questions for Jessica? Councilmember Balsanik?
Well, Your Honor, I'll move the set sale resolution.
Okay. Do I have a second? Councilmember Vaughn? Second. And council discussion? Clerk Flattin, please call the roll.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fults?
Yes.
Councilmember Balsanik?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Councilmember Lund?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Yes. The motion prevails. Thank you again, Jessica.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, have a good evening.
CARES Act. For this item, we will have an introduction by City Administrator Dan Watichah. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you. I don't want to recap everything since we've talked about this during a couple of meetings previously, but the city's received a little over $1.7 million. Federal money passed through the state specifically for COVID response. There's some other criteria requirements to it. Do expect that beyond this evening, this is not the final discussion, final decision, and the council continue narrowing some of the decisions, how the funds would be used. But I do think some pieces of it are more timely and should be advanced and committed this evening. A few specific purchases on behalf of the city, one being the transport ventilator for the ambulance, EMS crews. We have three existing ventilators that are 20-plus years old, have some limitations in how they're able to be used. Realistically, we only need one that can be put on an ambulance when it's needed, primarily during transports. So recommend that purchase, $9,000. Second item recommended is audiovisual equipment communications technology for the fire EMS training room. Quoted at $36,000 plus about $4,000 estimate for some electrical work and other adjuncts that might go with that. This piece is an example of the timeliness to start making some decisions. It's typically about a six, eight-week lead time. And in talking with the vendor, they're expecting it to go out to 16 to 20 weeks pretty quickly, as a lot of other cities are looking at using CARES Act for technology improvements. A big piece of this is related to, really, it's very much related to COVID. The fire department and EMTs have had to modify much of their training approach and doing more of online webinar-type piece for their monthly trainings. Even when doing it in-house training, it would be good to be able to record that so that they could present it to other members of the department who might not have been physically present that evening. So really looking at some important and needed technology improvements related to their fire and EMS training. The next item that recommending purchase is a software program that will help with EMS scheduling. Earlier this year, with the onset of COVID, we started implementing duty crews, basically having specifically scheduled crews bringing in those paid-on calls on the weekends, Friday through Sunday, which has really helped with our coverage and response. It also has helped with some of the hands-on experience for the department. And I think also Chief Attyatt's improved some of the morale and cohesion between the full-time and paid-on-call staff. But this scheduling, although the duty crews worked well as a model, it has posed problems from a scheduling standpoint. This software would solve that. Target Solutions is a platform we already use for some training and communication, so it would be seamless with that. That's about $4,500 recommended now. Next item of recommended purchases, the KIVAC cleaning machine would be used at the ICE Arena, used in disinfecting, sanitizing restrooms, laby area, locker rooms, even out on the rink itself along the boards. So it would be used for general cleaning, but also sanitizing. And with wanting a heightened interest in clean environments, and that being one that has a lot of people and sort of uncontrolled with multiple people in and out, really wanting to make sure that we're able to provide as clean and sanitized a location as we can. Other, is this the last one? The last specific purchase I've got recommended is to have tempered glass installed at the front counter, the customer service counter at City Hall. We did, prior to reopening to the public, we did put up plexiglass partitions. They certainly work, but they are a bit of a temporary action. With the number of people that go in and out the front doors on a regular basis, I really would rather have a more permanent installation and put up tempered glass at that front counter. I can stand for any questions on specific city purchases that I'm recommending? There's some others that are outlined that I expect we'll have additional discussion and maybe recommendations at a future meeting, but not pushing forward quite yet. There's some other questions on those. I do have a couple of other recommendations that are not city government-specific that I want to put forward, but this is a good place to pause if there's questions on these purchase, recommended purchases.
Council? Any?
Keep going.
Councilmember Fults?
Thank you, Your Honor. Dan, I thank you for beginning to add more meat to the bones here of your requests. And so for the things that you're asking, the things that you're asking for this evening for approval, just going, I guess that would be items, you say you have council action requests, one through eight, and so what you just mentioned is two through six?
Right.
And so I was wondering, now you have there on number, item number three, approve fire EMS training room equipment at $40,000. And so I punched your memo back into that spreadsheet that I created, and I noticed that you are asking for audiovisual equipment in a few different places. There's the community room, the fire EMS training room, and then also the police station emergency operations center, not to mention the mobile, the mobile unit for the police department. And so why is it that you're specifically asking for the fire EMS training room at this time and not the others?
The community room is one that's already been done, so not asking for something that we already did.
Okay.
The emergency operations center, quite frankly, I would like to have a discussion with our financial auditor. We need to make sure that whatever actions, we take whatever using this.
Or EMS-related payroll. And so I-
What's happening here, Councilmember?
Okay. Well, I just think, I feel, my two cents is that I feel uncomfortable with using $400,000 of the COVID funds for normal operations. And so given that the DCC did flag them perhaps as being COVID-related types of activities, I still personally have heartburn about when we know that these were normally budgeted items, and then like, for instance, if the school district is just facing an enormous amount of money in expenditures that are needed for the school district, and they're asking us for just $300,000, and we're saying no because we want to use our CARES funds, our CARE Act funds to cover normal operations payroll, I mean, that gives me a little heartburn. And so I don't know if I'm the only one who's feeling that that's ingenuous to do that, but I mean, that's how I feel. If you could say, yeah, we had X amount of overtime hours that were directly attributed to COVID, and that was additional above and beyond what we were anticipating for our budget, then I'd say, yeah, let's go for that. But when it's just covering normal payroll expenses, that gives me some heartburn.
Councilmember Lund?
Thank you, Your Honor. I do agree with Councilmember Fults in part, but I also recognize that we have specific things called out as recommended and other things as a list of options for which we could use this money. And the direction we did give was, how are we going to spend this? What do you think? What are the needs out there that could be tied to this, to this money? So I don't think that this was put together as a list that we necessarily would be checking yes by every single item. That's how I see it. And I see it as a list of potential needs and what their financial impacts are, and then it's up to us to give direction, like you're saying, as to, you know, is that really a good use of the funds or not? If it's something that is due to be replaced in a couple of years anyway, and still functions fine right now for the current needs, I would say that one gets tucked back into the nice-to-have list, right? But things that are directly related to costs incurred or needs that have developed because of the pandemic, then those become top of list. And so I think that's what we have here, these recommended ones so far, a little bit smaller items, but they are recommended items that I think meet that criteria that I just laid out. You know, I think we need to be careful about, and we've talked about this in the past too, there are a lot of needs out there, and so we just have to be very careful with how we're going about this, right? And then also, you know, school may be something that we need to really spend a lot of time talking about as we're more aware of what the needs are there. But we're not unique either. Every city, for the most part, has schools, and they're all going to be facing these challenges. And there may very well be future financial packages for these schools in Minnesota and the greater nation as well. And if that comes along, then we gave them money that could have been used for businesses, for social services, or for otherwise that we didn't need to spend. So we need to have an understanding of, you know, what other potential funding sources are out there. And maybe there's not any, and I know we're under the gun too, timelapse. I understand that. But I think it's just really important for us to understand all the different groups that are looking for money, what other funding sources are going to be available to them so that we can make the best choice.
Thank you, Councilmember Lund. Any other? Councilmember Fults?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to add a little bit to what Councilmember Lund just said, I did take the time to listen to National League of Cities seminar that they had done where there were some larger cities that were on the conference call, and they were talking about some of the things that they're using the funds for, and all three of those cities were using some of their funds for, to help the school districts. Something else that they talked about, which isn't on the list here, was helping employees with daycare, like as a, for instance, like, I'm so lucky that my kids are older and that I don't have to worry about this, but you know, if I was an employee and, you know, and with this, what we're looking at, having kids having to distance learn again, how is that you're going to help employees be able to afford extra daycare or make accommodations, being flexible, things of that nature? And so, I mean, just something else to, you know, think outside the box for about how it is that we support city staff that may have some of those challenges. But they all, they were all using some of their expenditures for their school districts. And so I, and, oh, and the second thing I wanted to say is that at the federal level, the Senate has passed their latest and greatest version, but there's no money in it that's set aside, not only for school districts or for local government. And so we're also supposed to be contacting our senators to beg for them to, you know, support local government, and we're so blessed to have the senators that we do, that they do support us. But probably doesn't hurt for us to give them a call and remind them how important it is for the federal government to be putting additional funds aside for local government, including school districts to that point. And then secondly, for the special session, it's not, is my understanding that there aren't, that perhaps a bill was introduced during special session, but it's not, the bonding bill is dead, and it's not going to be brought up again, you know, this summer. And so we're going to second year where there's not going to be a bonding bill. And so I don't know, I mean, I don't have any great hope that there'll be additional funds that'll be made available during this special session before the next legislative session that could be used to help our schools. So just two cents there. Thanks.
And Your Honor, it'd be Councilmember Fults, Councilmember Leifeld.
Thank you, Your Honor. So reading through the economic support for business, it talked about what we've put in, what we've, not necessarily spent, but what we've removed in regards to expenses. So it does indicate the 10% target, although it says that we, the city could decide to do more. What is that? I mean, we could decide to do more. Is that what this discussion is right now? I mean, I'd like to, we're not going forward with that at this moment. We're discussing just the upper portion of this memo I'm reading, or kind of help me understand where we're at with that, if you don't mind, Dan?
I paused at the upper portion, expecting to get also to the support for businesses and support for social services, but I felt that that was a point to break in case there were questions.
We'll be getting to that, is what I'm hearing. Thank you.
I expect to, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to make my note that I do believe, you know, Dan has mentioned using our auditor, our financial auditor, I think we said from the start, make sure our city's city expenses are taken care of first before we talk about funding to the rest of the community through a certain area. I think we're going to talk about that in a little bit. But if staff has done their homework and has got audited approvals to make it safe for our employees, and these updates are needed, I'm comfortable approving them. I think then we're doing our due diligence on behalf of the residents for the city dollars. That's where the dollars came to. After that is done, then we could talk about the next level of the memo, in my opinion. But I think, right now, I think the direction that staff forgot was to make sure we take care of our city first. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vaughn. Any other comments, council? Okay. Dan, is there anything else you would like to add?
If moving on to the next part of the memo.
Okay.
As Councilmember Leifeld pointed out, anecdotally, there's a target of 10% of the CARES funds should go to local businesses, small businesses. Where that comes from is when the legislature in the, I can't remember if it was the first or the second special session, but when the legislature was looking at a formula for dispersing the CARES Act money to the municipalities, there had been a version in that legislation that would have earmarked 10% towards local businesses. When that legislation was not passed, special session closed, the governor used executive powers to distribute the CARES Act. used executive powers to distribute the CARES Act money. He did not include that 10% piece, but that's where that anecdotal target comes from. With the heart grants, with the refunded license fees, with the cost for barricades and signs for the downtown, the cities exceeded that 10% figure. So just in looking at that target, we've met that, but could certainly choose to do more. And my recommendation, talking with John Hinsman, is let's commit to at least a quarter million dollars. But really recommend piggybacking that on a program that Dakota County is doing. Basically, looking for just the administrative efficiency of doing that. When we did the heart grants back in April, May, for a couple of weeks, that was Rusty Feifield's full-time job. We're short-handed, Rusty's not here. So creating a new grant program just really would be falling on staff extra hard. If there's a ready program through the county that we could add funds to, specific for Hastings, it's an efficient way to use those dollars. And I'd point out even, even Dakota County is not doing the work in-house. They're contracting it out to a, a third party. Next Stage, I think is the name of the company. For about three and a half percent as an administrative fee, in our case, it'd be an extra just under $9,000 to do a quarter million. But the, the piece that I reason recommending moving forward with that money now, one, although there's some question what the total city amount might come up to and is the city taking the lion's share of the dollars? I, I think that there, there'll be a half million dollars or more that could be distributed more broadly. Let's commit to a quarter million, half of that to the businesses right now. And the reason for that is although in talking with the county, their deadline for whatever dollars we might be putting in locally is the end of August. The application deadline for the businesses is August 14th. And really wanting to get ahead of that deadline on the thought that if our local businesses, our small businesses, under 50 employees, see that Hastings is putting additional dollars to it on top of Dakota County's, recognize that there's more grants going to be given out locally. Hopefully it encourages more businesses to apply for it and benefit from Dakota County's funding as well as the city's funding. So recommending the second, recommending putting money to it now. Also recognize that as we refine some of the, the figures, there's the potential that more money can be added later in August, but we're trying to get some of that out quickly. So we're ahead of the application deadline and encourage businesses to, to apply and utilize that. So I'd hand up for questions.
Councilmember Lund?
Thank you, Your Honor. Dan, can you explain how, if, if you know the details of it, how that'll work then with Dakota County since theirs is a lottery system? That could or could not, that could mean that nobody from Hastings gets their, their money. Would ours, would, would it negatively impact any Hastings businesses for us putting in? There's already, you know, X dollars committed to Hastings. So you know, they'd have a less chance of getting the county's portion of it. And then also would ours have to also be a lottery system?
I'll answer the, the quick part first. Yes, ours would be a lottery system. We'd be piggybacking on the county's program. And basically it's under the belief that there will be more eligible applicants in their, their dollars. Trying to process it quickly and get the money out there. We're following the state's lead at doing it as a lottery and drawing, drawing names from eligible applicants. The first part, you're asking if that would water it down and reduce the chances for Hastings businesses? No, not at all. The way it would work, John, if I say something wrong, please correct me. Dakota County has $10 million committed. There's roughly 1,000 grants, a 10,000 piece. Also noting, just in terms of small businesses, countywide, that's about one in 10 businesses would, would be able to get a grant. Obviously they need to be eligible for it, need to apply, but anyways, the, the Dakota County 1,000 grants would be drawn first. And then afterwards, they would look at, and, and hopefully a lot of Hastings businesses in there. And then afterwards, they would look at any additional funds that Hastings or other municipalities put in and draw simply from the, the remainder. So if completely made up numbers, if there were 200 Hastings applicants in the program, in the state or in the counties and 50 of those that funded through the counties, there's still 150 that did not get funded. We would draw our 25 from, from that population. So the money would stay in Hastings. It wouldn't wind up in Apple Valley or Rosemount or anywhere else. It also would make sure that nobody was somehow luck of the draw, nobody was getting two grants. So really trying to get it out there to as many as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Brax?
I haven't looked at this criteria or how businesses apply for this, but I guess one of my concerns might be, you know, the amount of overhead or administrative work it would take to submit such a grant. Have you looked at that at all to see kind of how much work is involved, paperwork? And make sure that it's something, because what I'm seeing and what I'm hearing from business owners is that, you know, they're overwhelmed already. They've made a lot of adjustments. They're trying to pivot their businesses, use their creative energies into their business. I want to help them without creating a bunch of hurdles they have to jump through, for lack of a better term. Is it easy to apply for this grant? Is it some paperwork, a lot of paperwork, very little paperwork? What are we talking about if you've looked at it? I can Google it and look to myself. I just haven't done it yet.
I have to admit, I have not looked at the application itself. So I, I can't speak firsthand, but my understanding in talking with the county and the county CDA, the intent was that it was to be streamlined and ask the, the minimum amount of information that could in order to to try to make it user-friendly. But, but there is an application process.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And I, I can add on to that too, Councilmember. I have taken a look, taken a look at the application itself. It's, it's an online application, requires some documentation, but I don't, I don't think it's obsessive.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Fults?
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of thoughts. And so Dan had mentioned that when you look at what we've expended to date already on the business community, community, it's $233,000, which is already over that 10%. And so what we're, what we're realistically doing is we're replenishing the hetero funds. And so if in the future, we have, when the second wave comes, we could do a second allocation to our community again, using what we've just replenished theoretically. I don't feel comfortable throwing money right now into the, the county's funds, only because I don't trust it, that they're doing this lottery and that what does that truly mean to our business community if we're sending in more money? I rather, you know, hindsight's always 2020, and perhaps we should have made our heart grants, you know, more. We, we should have raised the number of employees. So like, for instance, we've heard from Norvind Bishop of Emily's Bakery that they were ineligible for the grant because they had more than 25 employees. When I talked to Derek Jager of the YMCA, he said as well, they had more than 25 employees and they weren't able to ask for funds. And so there are those that were out there that are really awesome businesses within our community that weren't able, you know, to, to, to access our grant funds. And so I would rather see if we were going to do a round right now to make sure that we're taking care of those businesses that missed our first go around with the heart grants and, and give a distribution to those particular entities. And then, and as the memo talks about, the administrative committee was having deliberations about what to do with some of the nonprofits. And it does turn out, I mean, that we have some, you know, key cornerstone nonprofits within our community that have made asks that, you know, to help. And so we haven't had the opportunity amongst us to really define, you know, what does that dollar amount look like? And so if we had, I mean, because literally, I mean, what Dan has provided, if we were to okay everything that he has today within his budget memo, it only leaves $269,000 left over. If $250,000 of that went to the businesses and just whoop, there it went, it's gone. We've already, we've just ate up the whole 1.7 million dollars. And we haven't even touched upon the schools. And then we haven't touched upon what to do about the, the nonprofit entities within our community. And so I don't feel comfortable at all, just, just giving that 250 to the, the county and say, here you go, add it to your lottery and, and have at it. And so I think that it's more complicated than that. And we haven't had the opportunity to hear from the school district and the administrative committee hasn't had the opportunity to make final recommendations either. So I don't feel comfortable with this at this time. Thanks.
Councilmember Lund?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, I think the action, if, if you could be clear, you're not comfortable with the county, the $250,000, is that what you're saying, Councilmember Fults?
Right. At this point, just to say, okay, let's throw $250,000 into the county's business program and have at it because we just wiped out our entire budget. We just spent the 1.7 million dollars if we do that. If we were to, everything that's on that memo right now, literally accounts, and that's missing a couple quotes, is 1.100, I'm sorry, $1,473,000. And so, and it only leaves $269,000 left over. And so we've, we've taken care of everything. And I've already objected to the payroll expenses that were a part of normal budget expenditures. And so I just feel like we need to have, you know, some consensus here. Really, what is it that we? How is it that we're going to be fair about this? And, and also how to be realistic and, and moving forward? Because this is only the first wave. There'll be a second wave that'll be coming as well. And how do we plan for that? And so there have been some asks for the Economic Task Force to have some conversations about contingency planning and planning for the second wave. What does that begin to look like? How do we support our community? And so I know that we're really starting to get down to the wire, where we have to make decisions by the end of August as to how it is we want to do this. But I don't feel like we're having a full, a full conversation about, you know, what do we do about the big nonprofits in town? The big businesses that missed out and, and the school district. So, and so they haven't even been able to announce yet what they're going to be doing to, you know, open our schools and what that's going to look like. If you, if you go by what the governor's guidance was, if you look at by year per thousand population, I think we were at Fort, I think we were in the, we were in the range where it's in classroom for the elementary school and it would be hybrid for the older kids. And so, and, and the, and the new superintendent had already said, well, if they're, they're thinking that they're going to have to give every elementary age student a device, which is going to cost $100,000 per grade level. So if that's just, if that's K through five, that's six levels, that's $600,000 in expenditures just for technology for the kids, not to, not to talk about busing and teachers and PPE and all that other stuff. And so their, their needs are so astronomical, it's hard to even begin to put your head around it. And so that's why I keep bringing this up, is that I think that is prudent for us to be having this conversation and to be, and to be thoughtful in listening to them and, and hearing what their needs are, rather than just discarding them and not including them within the memo and not including them within our conversation, because it is such a, it has a huge impact to our community. I'd much rather see money go to the school district to make sure our kids are safe and they're being educated than rather than just going through a lottery system and giving money to the county and however they dole it out, they dole it out. And so I just think it's, you know, priorities and really what can we do with the limited amount of funds that we have?
Okay.
All right.
Councilmember Lund?
Thanks. Yeah, so I'm, the, the question was just about the $250,000, but you know, the, I, I go back to one of my, my comment earlier, which was if it's a, if an expense that occurred directly because of COVID-19, then I think the city has every right to put themselves first. If it's a, if it's a, a repair, an improvement, a new purchase, ongoing regular expenses that may have some connection, I, I think we need to, we really need to tuck those towards the back. And, and maybe they, they still get funded and maybe they don't. But you know, if, if we can't, if, I mean, payroll, I understand the, the calculations that, that are being laid out there and, and it's, it's the right way to do it if you're looking to justify payroll. I'm not saying that. But I don't know if the payroll element would, would, would be rise to the top as far as where that money would go. Things that have been recommended so far, I have no problem with. I do think we need to earmark a sizable amount for local business relief. I'm not sure if I'm comfortable with the county's lottery system. I don't think it's bad necessarily. I mean, I think Councilmember Fults said she didn't trust it. I, it's not that, I don't think it's a trust issue. I think it's just also too quick, right? We need to know like now, basically, because they have to have everything in by the 14th and we don't even have another meeting until, till then unless we do a special meeting. So I'm interested to hear what other people on the council have to say about the, the county portion and how, and how we would you know, possibly put money towards that.
Thank you, Councilmember Lund. Councilmember Balsanik?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a lot of faith in what Dakota County does in, in terms of anything financial. They're the only county that runs in the black every year. No deficit and so forth. So I, I have a lot of faith in what they would be doing with these grants. You know, initially knee jerk reaction from local businesses. Well, what the heck? The city isn't going to take care of us. They're going to send that over to the county. Oh my God. Another layer that we have to go through. Now, quick question for John Hinsman, because you said you looked at the application. The application, whether it's done through the county or through the city, is the same?
A Councilmember, the, the application online from the county, I've heard from others that it's one of the easiest applications they filled out, business owners. So it would be the same. What would happen is would apply first for the county allocation, which is $10 million. If they're unsuccessful in granting the money from Dakota County, Dakota County gives us a list randomly of all the businesses in Hastings that were not funded. So we then can fund those businesses through, through our resource, through our resources of, of CARES Act funds. So we will be able to, to take that random list and fund 25 at that point.
Okay, thank you. And then question for Dan. You said earlier that the county was going to hire a firm to oversee the lottery system for distribution. for distribution of the funds, is that correct?
The county through its CDA has contracted with a company called Next Stage to handle the administration of the applications, review to make sure that the applicants are eligible, complete, located within the county, that all that, as well as handle the lottery. The company, I believe, has also worked or in the process of working with Hennessy and Scott Counties.
Okay, thank you. Because again, I put a lot of faith in what Dakota County can do with any kind of finances as far as that goes. And then my next concern is that if we were going to, as a city, handle these applications, I don't know, since we've lost Rusty Fivefield, I don't know that we have anybody that we, that can do that on our staff without placing a huge burden on what their normal responsibilities are. So I don't have a problem with the county taking care of something like this, hiring this independent firm. I'm sure they've done background checks, so on and so forth. It's all going to be handled very well. The big concern that I have is that it's handled quickly, that it gets taken care of as soon as possible. I'm sure there's going to be a deadline for applications and then hopefully it'll be expedited as quickly as possible so that the local businesses know. I was surprised because I received a letter from Emily's, from Noreen at Emily's Bakery, and they were not able to get any funds. Do we have any control over minimum or maximum, excuse me, maximum number of employees in order to get a grant like this? Either Dan or John, if you can answer this?
I could take a stab at that one, council member. The requirements that we would set up would be, if we were to follow the county program, would be consistent with what they have. So that's that 50 employees are under calculation. So that we would follow those same criteria in piggybacking onto their program. When we take a look at, you know, establishing a program on our own, I think as you mentioned earlier, there's a lot of staff time involved in that. I'd have to question what the advantage is. If we've got a situation there in which we have got a facility set up that could quickly manage a grant, that can give us the randomized names to fund folks, that seems like something that certainly worth considering.
And again, it kind of, I don't want to say, you know, that we're kicking the can down the road. It sort of takes the monkey off of our back as a city and the city staff so that there's no hard feelings. It's handled from a neutral perspective. And again, if there's any funds left over, you know, some things will get kicked back to us financially and we can certainly handle that, I would think, in some way, shape or form. So I'm not having any problem at all with the county taking the lead on this. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Lund.
Thank you, Your Honor. So it sounds a little bit different than I thought at first. So effectively, this Next Stage is doing the vetting. And then from what John was saying, we would then be provided a filtered list, those who didn't get the lottery, the Dakota County Lottery. So we're not double dipping. We know that they meet the criteria. A lot of, it's mostly administrative is what we're getting out of this. But we're given the list at the end and then it's up to us to then distribute funds at that point, is that correct? So it's even possible by that point in time, we could double down on that 250 if, you know, what, like what Dan was saying, you know, maybe later it's more, but right now, let's say 250. And increase the number of available grants at that point in time. Because it's, we have control then. So it's a little less cold and lottery-like to me now. It seems more like an efficient way to get applications through. Am I right?
A council member, yeah, with the details of the program, you're correct. The initial $10 million Dakota County is going to be spending countywide. Businesses in Hastings would be part of that 1,000 applications that they could be funding. After that, we would receive 25 randomized names of businesses that we could fund through our CARES allocation at that point. This system, the Next Stage Corporation, would take care of the administration aspect and also the due diligence aspect at the end. What we would be responsible for at that point would be just cutting the checks based upon the 25 businesses they give us. And with the possibility of more businesses and a future allocation larger than $250,000, I believe that could, that may be a possibility as well, depending on whether we can meet the timeframe for the program.
Thanks, John. Councilmember Fults.
Your Honor, and that's what makes me leery about not trusting it, is that it's randomized, that is just a random 10 businesses would, or 25 businesses would get $10,000. And so that doesn't like necessarily look at need and it doesn't make sure that Emily's Bakery, who hasn't gotten anything yet, gets something, or the YMCA, who has huge needs and has been helping with food distribution and such, doesn't get a piece. And so that's what I don't like about it. So that is just, it's like, you know, it's just a dart game, right? Where you're just throwing darts and, oh, okay, we got 25 of them and here's $10,000. And so not that they don't need it, and so don't get me wrong, I know that they need it. And so I'm not questioning that whatsoever. It's just the distribution method that makes me super queasy. And then furthermore, we just spent everything that we had on the business community and it doesn't make any allocation for, as we were talking about, making some money available for the nonprofits who are providing food distribution, which sorely need it, you know, I don't know if you're paying attention, but Congress isn't passing the extension of the $600 unemployment weekly stipend for folks who are out of work. And so that they're, you know, now anticipating that the need is going to, you know, start to get worse for those who are, who are out of work. And so there's that community need. And so don't get me wrong when I say that, I don't think that the business community needs assistance, but we already have provided $233,000. They came first. I mean, I was the first one out of the gate. We need to help our business community. And I feel like, okay, we've done that. And so like, let's make sure that we're also taking care of these other aspects before we give away everything that we had, that we have available. So to give the 233 and then another 250, and then especially with this being this randomized distribution for the second allotment, that just doesn't seem like it's a prudent way to, yeah, it's a quick way to get rid of the money, but I just don't think that we're, I'm not personally ready to say, yeah, here, take 250 and have at it. So especially the way it's being distributed. Thanks.
Councilmember Brax.
Well, I guess the way that I'm looking at it is a little different. And Dan, maybe you can correct me on the timeline, but do we have to make a commitment very shortly, like even before the next council meeting? Because if their application deadline is April 14, or I'm sorry, I don't know what month it is, it's August, August 14th, then do we have to decide this tonight? Or do we have time after tonight? Because it seems like our time is a little bit short.
You have time after tonight. My understanding is we have until the end of August to put money to the county's program. The reason I recommend doing it sooner than later is the businesses that might apply, their application deadline is August 14th, before our next regularly scheduled meeting. So if we might do a quarter million dollars, 25 additional businesses, is that either help advertise the program or is it an enticement or some confidence that they might be funded? You know, and just, I hate to see us have a low turnout of applications on the county's programs. It's just that's where I think that there's a benefit to committing some dollars, some sizable dollars sooner than later. Have till the end of the month, but I think that it helps advertise and encourage our businesses to put their name in.
So I just want to echo what Councilmember Balsanik said. I do trust Dakota County in the sense that they have set up a program, they have an application, they have an administrator. These are all things that we do not have and we don't have them set up and it would take time to set them up. It would take money to set them up. And if I'm understanding Dan correctly, we have basically no plan in that vein. So the option in front of us is the option that we have. And if we think that there's going to be a better option, I don't know where all those other things are going to come from, but to me, if we can minimize administrative overhead and provide additional benefit to our businesses, then it's a winning situation. And I know that there are a lot of needs in the community and they're astronomical and sometimes they're overwhelming to me. But I think our businesses, I have 10 to 15 to 20 emails in my inbox from just this week from business owners who are telling me, we want to survive, we still need help. So I'm not willing to check the box and say that we gave all the businesses everything that we could because we haven't, we have this opportunity in front of us. And I think we need to take advantage of some organizational efficiency. That's just my opinion. And that doesn't mean that I think any other needs are less important or not prioritized, but I think this is an important thing that we can piggyback on, gain some organizational efficiency and get some more money to our businesses sooner so that they can stay in business. Think it's important.
Thank you, Councilmember Brax. Councilmember Fults.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would feel more comfortable if I knew, rather than giving like $10,000 to 25 businesses, I'd rather give $5,000 to 50 businesses to make sure that it's getting distributed and then to also cross-reference what we've already provided now that we know that, you know, we gave the HART grants to 63 businesses in Hastings. And it was needs-based. They had to justify what their ask was and so not everybody got the $4,000. I mean, the majority got almost $4,000. But, and so they've made that ask already. And so that's what gives me super heartburn is just like, oh, okay, so we're going to benefit only 25 businesses within our community and it's not going to be rather need-based and make sure that, you know, whether or not they've ever received money from us. And so, and I'm not, and again, I'm not comfortable with the 250,000. I could say $100,000, you know, and if we could control them getting a smaller allotment and if we had some control to make sure that businesses that were of that larger category, that 25 to 50 employees that weren't eligible for the HART grants, that they could come first because they haven't gotten a distribution from us. I mean, that's what, that's what gives me the heartburn is not, is just the random like, okay, just forking out money to give out money and not having more of a thoughtful plan about how it is that it's being given to our businesses. Because, yeah, I know, I know that there's lots of needs and I never said that there wasn't, but it's just that it's so that it, just to make sure that those who haven't been helped yet can get some help and that the, and that the big businesses like that do have, okay, like for instance, you know, a restaurant that has 25 employees versus a small business that maybe has, you know, just a couple of employees, right? Okay, I'd rather see the money go towards a larger employer to help keep more people, you know, employed. And so that's just where I'm going with it. And so that's, I wish that we had a little bit more control. If we could, if we could spread the money around the community a little bit more, that would make me feel a lot better about it.
Councilmember Lund.
Thank you, Your Honor. I understand your point and I don't know if $10,000 is the magic number. Obviously, that's going to be great for some, too much for others, not enough for others. It's just a shot in the dark number. $5,000 probably is even less significant to spread around, you know? I don't know if you're going to help 50 businesses survive on 5,000 versus 25 on 10. I don't know. I'm sure we can look at that dollar amount per grant at a different point in time, right? I mean, we have until end of August to fund it. I'm sure we have until the end of August to say how many grants we want to give away too. So if that's a hangup that you have, I'm sure we can talk about that. And please, John or Dan, jump in if that's not right, but.
We can check into that, but my understanding is that we would be piggybacking on the county's program, not suddenly giving them parameters or creating something new. It seems very reasonable, but I'd rather check with them before we just assume it's okay.
The other thing is, you know, I'm just talking out loud, but you know, this is our opportunity to do so. So, you know, the administration part of it is what, it seems pretty straightforward, but it's not, it is nobody's regular job to do. And so it is actually cumbersome and, you know, and if they really do have a good application process and a good vetting process to understand if the applicants are actually qualified to receive the grants, then is there a way to, once the grants are awarded, to also understand who the applicants were and get the full list? For future funding purposes to, you know, if, let's say, we decide months down the line to use heder funds again, maybe we could use that list as a pre-vetted list of businesses and cross-reference that against what's already been funded and so forth. Is that something that might be possible? And I know you probably don't know, but if you do, you know, that'd be great. If not, find out, that'd be great too.
Yeah, council member, I'm unaware of how easily we could get that list. I know with the program, if we were to be part of it, we'd get the names that we asked for as far as the number of that. As far as anything beyond that, uncertain whether we could get that or how we could get that.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's a great discussion. I get the passion when we're trying to distribute the dollars. Some efficiencies here, we don't have somebody's staff overhead, nothing that could use the dollars of us trying to put all this together. CDA is the one that is putting this together and they've actually, I've read the memo where they want to contract out the Next Stage, which is a worthy business of doing it. So I think I make it simpler. I think I approve, I make a motion to approve the 250,000 for 25 grants, using the administrative fees of $8,600 to Next Stage on behalf of the city of Hasting, sorry.
Thank you, Councilmember Vaughn.
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Seconded by Councilmember Balsanik. Any other discussion?
I would just say too, I think the county, you know, as Joe stated, I mean, we have no, they have no debt and we have to trust them. We don't have the administration to do the follow-through that they're going to be able to do. I think we need to be here to support our businesses. They are struggling, I hear it all the time. I think also our businesses help support our Hastings Family Services, our United Ways, they get help from them as well. We're here as a community and I think our important role is to how do we help our businesses? Because if we don't have our businesses to go to, that's going to be hard on a community in general. So I concur with the motion and any other discussion? Clerk Flatton, please call the roll.
Member Vaughn.
Yes.
Offspring Balsanik.
Yeah.
Offspring Fults.
No.
Offspring Leith though.
Yes.
Member Lund.
Yes.
Yes.
Your fast leader.
Yes. Motion prevails. Thank you all. Okay, council members, do you have any announcements?
Oh, oh, oh.
Sorry. Oh, sorry, Dan. I'm sorry. Continue.
I know we had a lot of discussion.
I know, I know. Sorry, continue.
There still is a piece of the memo we didn't get to, plus the whole set of recommendations that.
I know, I'm sorry.
The council's not interested in voting on, but didn't get a chance.
Sure, move ahead.
The last piece of the memo that we touched on. The last piece of the memo, though, we touched on, some of the conversation deals with some of the nonprofit, social service-type areas. I believe that the council could safely designate $100,000 to $200,000 towards that. I don't think that that wipes out all the CARES Act money, I think that there is money to do that. I give a range because the exactly how that might be used isn't figured out yet. There's certainly been some early discussions at the Administration Committee, obviously some discussions with prior council meetings, but not a particular direction on how to go. I do want to recognize a couple of things. One, it might be given as a assistance to nonprofits as business entities in their own right that have been affected by COVID, have been shut down by COVID or governor's orders related to COVID, seen their, their, their sales or their activities reduced. And it would be easier for us to support them under sort of that business, nonprofit, that business aspect, rather than, at this point, rather than funding any specific services that they might provide, whether it was paying for a mental health webinar, or paying for a meals program, a number of, or paying for Chromebooks, a number of activities that we've heard from some other organizations in the community saying, here's what they've been doing, or places that we could help them. But we still have to make sure that the city follows statutory requirements that we spend money on public purposes. It gets into more of a gray area when looking at those sort of direct purchases from the nonprofits. It might be eligible under CARES Act, but not necessarily under Minnesota law. So rather than stepping into that gray area, we recommend that we look at ways to providing funding directly to the nonprofit, similar to the way we're providing economic assistance to for-profit businesses. Doesn't mean a lottery program, but in terms of giving it to them as an operating organization, they've still got profit and loss sheets, they've still got employees, they're just a different part of the tax code. But anyways, at this point, my recommendation's a bit soft. It says, we recognize that there's needs, let's commit some significant dollars, or range of dollars, towards that, but with the exact plan on how that would be spent could be something that would come back to the council, hopefully in two weeks or four weeks. But acknowledging and making that commitment that there would be dollars towards those social services.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Councilmember Vonn? I'm sorry, Lund? Sorry.
I'll just speed it along. I'll make a motion that we approve, allocate $250,000 through Hedra for nonprofit organizations.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Okay, Councilmember Balsanik? Any other discussion? Councilmember Fults?
Your Honor, well, since I, I'm sorry, I'm keeping, I'm keeping tally here, I got my spreadsheet, and guess what, folks? We got $19,798 not appropriated right now, according to the memo. $19,000, you just gave away $250,000 to the business community. We don't have an extra $250,000 any longer because it was just all given to the business community. And so that's what I was trying to make the point of, is that if we made that allocation, then there's not anything left over to be able to discuss about making these kinds of appropriations for the nonprofits and the school district. And so to make that kind of commitment to funding, which is huge, and it's way more than the nonprofits that we're aware of that have asked, that means that, that means we're cutting payroll. I mean, that we're, that's where the cuts would have to come, or some of these big asks for HVAC systems, or mobile command AV equipment. And so, I mean, I hate to be the Debbie Downer here, but I mean, really, that's what we're looking at realistically. And so I think that we have to, you know, instead of just throwing out these big numbers and just saying, oh, all right, you know, I just cannot believe that we're not putting funds aside for the school district, who by far, out of any organization within our entire community, is going to be hit the hardest by the school opening. And so, so you can go ahead and make a $250,000 motion, but I just don't, I mean, we only have so many dollars, and that's the challenge with being in that memo format, is that you can't see how the dollars are adding up.
Thank you, Councilmember Fults. Councilmember Lund?
Yeah, I understand the math, Councilmember Fults. It's not that, it's not that I can't add things up in a memo format, it's the fact that I don't think everything on the memo needs to go towards, or that the money needs to go towards everything on the memo, it's a list of options. Right now, we have recommended options that add up to, I don't, less than $100,000, you know? So we're, we're not spending $1.7 million in memos right now, that's up to us to decide at a later date. I've already told you that, that my opinion is some of these things like, and you agree, that payroll doesn't necessarily make sense. You don't feel necessarily comfortable about the large dollar of payroll that we're looking at there. So that cuts down the number from 1.7 being spent down to, you know, closer to 1.5 or whatever. So I think the money is there, and also, if we, this money needs to be spent by November, that's, we know that, right? If we get going on some of these things, make the money available, this is not going through the county, this is going through Hedra, people will apply, they'll state their needs, and if there's money left over, then that's up to Hedra and also the organizations, frankly, to decide how much they need. If there's money left over, then we can reallocate that money. But if we sit here and we don't know the needs, this is a $100,000 to $200,000 recommendation, Dan did his best, but we don't know. And so, you know, if we go through this and it's evaluated, and the need turns out to be $117,000, great, then we have $133,000 left to put towards, you know, academic needs or what have you. So that was my thought process behind it. Because we're going to sit here and nitpick about $50,000, $6,000, and so forth until it's November, and then we're not going to have the ability to spend everything. So some of these, I think those organizations know what their needs are, they can quickly come to the table, apply, state their case, and we can understand, and we can make decisions if that, you know, if that fits our criteria or not. That's, that was the thought process there. So, you know, yeah, it's more than what was being proposed by 50,000 bucks, but, you know, you can certainly amend it if you'd like to chop it down.
Councilmember Lund? Councilmember Vonn?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to lend my support to the motion, because I used to sit on the United Way Board, and the businesses I heard today have all put applications in there. So United Way is all local dollars are kept local, they're kept in Hastings, and they get distributed to the, to the community. I've heard from Councilmember Fults multiple times about the school district, I've heard about the YMCA. When I went through the applications when I was on the board, it was a lot of school district. So that is the best way, in my opinion, that we give it to the businesses, or give it to the nonprofits that have local representation, that have a process, and let them distribute it to where they think the need is most important. I'm really questioning the whole CARES Act coming to the city to be the distribution point for the community. I think what we originally started is we need to take care of our city residents on behalf of the city tax dollars that we're using, and I think we're doing a fairly good job, I give staff credit of giving us options, and keep working at what is going to make it safe for our employees, and it's good use of tax dollars on behalf of the city. So I support the motion, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Brax?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe a school is a nonprofit. Anybody know?
I think that depending on what the Administration Committee looks at with sort of recommendation on how those dollars get used, it could certainly be rolled into that social service category. But I would tend to think from a legal standpoint that it's not a nonprofit, because it's a, I'm assuming that, I believe, more of a municipal, not municipal, but a governmental corporation, it's not a 501(c)(3). The same way the city's not a nonprofit organization.
So I guess my question is, and I'm just thinking ahead to the Administrative Committee meeting, because I'll be running it, and as we go through and talk about some of these issues that revolve around nonprofits, I guess what I'm trying to decide is, and something I've been pushing for, is, is the council supportive of giving money to the school or not? Because I think that our committee, that's an issue that I feel like at the committee level is not appropriate to make that decision, it's really a council decision. So while I know that's not on the memo, as a committee, when we met, we didn't make that decision because it seems like a bigger decision than the Administrative Committee should make on its own. So I guess what I'm trying to just kind of sort out here is, are we going to have to make that decision about money going towards the school, or is the council as a whole going to make that decision? Mayor, I know you probably don't have the answer to that right offhand, but my sense was that that is a full council decision, not one the Administrative Committee would make on its own.
I guess my safe assumption would be you'd bring it to us. Administrative Committee would bring it to us.
And I, I kind of separated it out, because if it is not a nonprofit or a social service, which is kind of what we were dealing with, then I didn't bring it under that umbrella, and therefore we didn't talk about it. So I'm just, you know, if that's a separate category, it's not on the memo, you know, I'm just wondering how we're dealing with that, because we need to handle it some way.
I don't know, I don't know how to answer that. Dan, or Dan Fleagle, would you have any insight?
I think what, thank you, Mayor, I think what it's going to come down to is, is the motion intended to fund the school district as part of the nonprofits or not? What is the intent of the council in this motion? I think I would consider the school a nonprofit organization, and it is exempt from paying tax, but I don't think that's the critical question here. I think the critical question is the council's intent to use these funds that are allocated to nonprofits for more of the social services-type organizations that are mentioned in the memo, the, you know, the, or are, is the council's intent to have them used in part for the school? It seems to me that there is a clear question here before the council, whether or not the council wants to allocate any CARES funds for the school district or not, and I would recommend that the council as a whole take that up and make a decision on it, rather than leaving that to some later decision that's not quite so certain. So my suggestion would be to deal with the clear question of, does that include school or does it not? And perhaps the motion should be dealt with to take care of that and answer that question.
So would it be, the question, Mayor, would it go to Councilmember Lund, who made the motion, to ask what his intent was, if the school is to be included or not in that motion?
Might interject here, I think if a council, I would recommend that you deal with this as an amendment to the motion, someone make a motion to clarify what it should be, and then you, as the council, can decide if that will be the will of the council or not. And I think from that action, you can decide if these funds that are allocated, if they are approved, will or will not be considered for school district use.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Councilmember Vonn?
Thank you, Your Honor. Then I make an amendment to the motion that it does not include the school district dollars.
I'll second that.
Okay, Councilmember Brax? Councilmember Fults, you have, you're unmuted. Did you want to speak?
Um, sir, Your Honor, I was actually going to make the opposite amendment that Mark made to include the school districts within that definition, because I think $250,000 is way too much just to make for nonprofits in general, so... To set aside $250,000 for nonprofits and nothing for the school district, I'm sorry, that just doesn't rub me the right way out.
Any other discussion? Councilmember, oh, no, sorry. So we have an amendment to the motion.
Proceed, Your Honor. If there is no further discussion on the amendment, then I would propose that you call for a vote on the amendment, and then see if that passes or not, that would or would not amend the main motion, and then you could still be back at that point in time, other amendments are still possible at that point in time, before the main motion is voted on.
Okay, thank you. Clerk Flatton, please call the roll if there's no other discussion, which I see none.
Yes.
Councilmember Balsanik?
No.
Councilmember Fults?
No.
Councilmember Leifeld?
No.
Councilmember Lund?
Yes.
Councilmember Brax?
Yes.
Clerk Assender?
The amendment prevails. Now we have the motion by Councilmember Lund, and seconded by, can't remember, I'm sorry.
I believe Councilmember Balsanik.
Councilmember Balsanik, thank you. Clerk Flatton, please call the roll.
Councilmember Vonn? Councilmember Balsanik?
Yes.
Councilmember Fults?
No.
Councilmember Leifeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Lund?
Yes.
Councilmember Brax?
Yes.
Clerk Assender?
Motion prevails. Uh, Dan? Yes?
Just want to point out, before you move to the next agenda, there were several specific city-related purchases recommended earlier that did not have any action, if the council so inclined.
Your Honor, I'll move to go with the recommendations that the city staff.
Thank you, Councilmember Balsanik. Second, please.
Your Honor, just to, I'll make that second, just to clarify, it was items two through six, right, that were city staff recommendations?
With the seconded by Councilmember Fults. Any other discussion, counsel? Clerk Flatton, please call the roll.
Councilmember Vonn?
Yes.
Councilmember Balsanik?
Yes.
Councilmember Fults?
Yes.
Councilmember Leifeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Lund?
Yes.
Councilmember Brax?
Yes.
Clerk Assender?
Yes. Motion prevails.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Fults?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't know what our next discussion is going to look like, but since we're making motions to set aside large amounts of money for various entities, I feel that it behooves me to make a motion to set aside $300,000 as requested by the superintendent of School District 2000, or 200, to earmark funds for their request. And so I'll make a motion to earmark $300,000 as... thousand dollars, uh, as requested by the superintendent of the Hastings School District.
Thank you, Councilmember Folch. Do I have a second by counsel? Do I have a second by counsel? I do not have a second, Councilmember Folch. Councilmember Balsonic?
Yeah, I'll second it, just for the sake of getting a vote, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Balsonic. Discussion, counsel? Councilmember Vaughn? Well, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Thank, thank you, Your Honor.
Can, can Dan Wateech just speak first, please?
I, I just not expecting this motion, and a little bit caught by surprise, maybe Dan Fleagle might weigh in. The CARES Act has specific restrictions that it cannot be used to replace lost governmental revenues, and some concern about are, are we potentially setting ourselves up for a legal problem with this, since the school is a governmental entity? I, I just looking for clarification, I'm not trying to weigh in on if it's a good decision, I'm just worried about the technical, technicality to it.
Thank you, Dan. Councilmember Vaughn, did you want to, or Dan Fleagle, did you want to comment first?
Your Honor, I, I would echo Dan Wateech's comments. Uh, it's not something that staff has looked at. I don't think I can tell you right now if, if this is something that the city is authorized under the CARES Act to disperse for. Um, I think we have time on this decision. I understand that, you know, with funds being allocated, that there's a desire to have this item taken care of. I would propose that it be deferred. I, I can't give you an opinion under the CARES Act if the, if, if school districts can be funded in this way. I, I just can't do that right now, and I was not prepared to do that tonight. So I, that's about all I can say, is, is I would ask that the council, please give staff an opportunity to research this before they would take a vote on it.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Councilmember Vaughn?
No further comment, that's exactly what I was going to say, it's-
Okay, Councilmember Brax?
I'd like to make a motion to table this, um, topic for the next council meeting.
And Councilmember Lund?
I'd like to second that motion, um, and just say that, um, i- I, I, I appreciate-
A party of order, Your Honor, you can't have any discussion on tabling.
Oh.
It is true, uh, a motion to table is a non-debatable motion, so if there's been a motion in a second, then it should be called for.
Okay, Clerk Flatt, please call the roll. Thank you, Councilmember Balsonic.
Member Vaughn?
Yes.
Uh, Member Folch?
Yes.
Uh, Member Balsonic?
Yes.
Uh, Member Lythel?
Yes.
Uh, Lund?
Yes.
Uh, Member Brax?
Yes.
Aircraft spender?
That motion prevails. Dan Wateech, any other discussion on, before I move on?
No, I, I'm good this evening, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, counsel, do you have any other announcements? Councilmember Folch?
Your Honor, uh, just a, an update that, um, I had, uh, shared with the, with the council, that, uh, the, the two votes on the bonding bill, um, both were defeated in the House, and, and as such, um, it is now being disclosed in the media that the, it is not anticipated that the legislature will be bringing forth another bonding bill initiative, because it would jeopardize, um, the issuance of, uh, the state bonds, the normal state bonds, and so, um, it's, it's, so unfortunately, um, I hate to have to share that we actually did have two, um, initiatives that were in, uh, the, the House bonding bill. Um, we had originally both the Highway three sixteen safety improvement project, uh, the one million dollar gap funding, and then the two million dollars that's needed for our city hall preservation of the dome. Um, it was, uh, defeated, uh, during the normal legislative, uh, session, and then when it went into a special session, the, uh, the special session bonding bill only had in it the, uh, city hall, uh, two million dollar request, um, not the Highway three sixteen, and, uh, and that was also defeated, unfortunately. Um, our own House Representative didn't, uh, vote to support, uh, the special session bill. And so, um, I, um, we'll have to have these discussions tomorrow. The Finance Committee, um, is meeting all day, will be hearing from all of the department heads to discuss what their needs are, and take into consideration with the budget constraints that we'll know we'll have next year. And we'll hear more about, uh, the recommendations for how it is they think that we might be able to, uh, fill those, uh, those bonding, uh, that, that gap that's left, um, from those, uh, special bonding requests. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Folch. Um, I have a couple announcements. Music in the Park at Levy Park, supported by Ruth and George Doffing Charitable Fund. Six twelve live on Thursday, August sixth at seven PM, performing rock, blues, impop, Yanrez, and Jake Nelson on Thursday. August thirteenth at seven PM, performing a unique blend of alternative country with a Jake spin. Music in the Park has been limited to two hundred and fifty people in attendance and social distancing requirements. It's free and open to the public. Story Walk along where Hastings River Walk from Levy Park to JCPark will feature a leaf can be from Saturday, August fifteenth to Monday, August seventeenth. Primary election, City Hall will open Saturday, August eighth, from ten to three, and Monday, August tenth, from eight to five. The primary election is Tuesday, August eleventh, polls open seven AM to eight PM. Meetings Tuesday, August fourth, tomorrow, eight AM, Finance Committee, to, uh, talk about twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one budget. Wednesday, August fifth, is HEDRA Workshop, six PM. Monday, August tenth, Planning Commission at seven PM. Thursday, August thirteenth, HEDRA, six PM. Friday, August fourteenth, is City Council, and will be canvassing the election results, and that is at four thirty. Monday, August seventeenth, five thirty, City Council has a closed session to meet with the attorney about a litigation, and seven PM, uh, that same night, City Council has a regular meeting. Any other announcements? I would, if not, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Councilmember Brax, with, uh, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. Any discussion? Okay, Clerk Flatt, please call the roll.
Member Vaughn?
Yes.
Uh, Member Balsonic?
Yes.
Folch?
Yes.
Uh, Lythel?
Yes.
Uh, Lund?
Yes.
Uh, Member Brax?
Yes.
Aircraft spender?
Yes. Motion, or, uh, we are adjourned. Have a good night, thank you.
Good night.